Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. This is Hudsonville City Commission. Regular session dated November 12th, 2024. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see Dave Nitre did sneak in here, huh? How was the flight, Dave?
Both flights went well.
You had a tailwind and you made it here. Well, good to see you, sir.
He jumped out over Hudson.
I didn't expect to see him here tonight. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bolheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeVray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Camp?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Now is the time for a moment of silence. I've spoken to a few of the members on the dais here in the staff concerning one individual in particular I just wanted to have a moment of silence for. It's a gentleman who grew up in the local community from the local area by the name of Frederick Butterworth. That name means something to some of us who have been in the Planning Commission for years. This is Doug Butterworth's father. Frederick Martin Butterworth, aged 91, was called home on October 28th, surrounded by his family. Fred started his adulthood entering the United States Army at the age of 17, where he served his beloved United States for nine-plus years. Lastly, as a supply sergeant, he deployed twice into the Korean War. His loyalty to the U.S. and its red, white, and blue flags were a testament to Fred's dedicated and responsible nature, and flying those colors was always important to him. Then, once back in Grand Rapids, he made a lot of acquaintances, became a grocery-delivery truck driver with Spartan Foods, and for almost 30 years, and if not for all those years, he acquired many acquaintances and friends in the local community. I call this out for really a couple of reasons. Those of us that know Doug, he's been a dedicated community member and seeing his father pass like this at a very late age in his life. But more importantly, yesterday was Veterans Day. And for those of us that have veterans in our family or who have served, we understand how serving in any capacity, whether it's law enforcement, or first responders, or those of us that serve in the military, really shapes and defines us for the rest of our lives. And I'd just like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Frederick Butterworth and all those that were called home over the last year. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Before we go to the consent agenda items, I'd like to introduce one of the newest staff members to the city, Jacob Biegard. Jacob, would you step up and introduce yourself to the commission formally? You came on board, you said, what, four weeks ago now?
Yes, October 21st.
And maybe just give us a little bit of an update of who you are. I think a lot of us know you, but I think it's kind of important that you formally introduce yourself at a commission meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. I think there's only two of them up here that I haven't actually been able to formally shake hands with. But as the mayor said, my name is Jacob Biegard. If you ever worked in the oil fields, I will accept the figure as a pronunciation on that as well. But Jacob Biegard has been with the city since October 21st. I was born and raised in Mount Pleasant, so the fire up the chips, CMU's right in my backyard. I'm a two-time graduate of Grand Valley State University with degrees in political science and my master's in public administration with a concentration in local and regional government. I started my career in electoral politics before going back to Grand Valley to pursue my master's, and I spent three years doing public programming at the Howenstang Center for Presidential Studies. And then, in the last three years, rounding three years here, I've been serving in the economic development realm from the EEO agency side of it, working for the right place. I spent six months in grad school as the business development intern for the right place, working throughout eight counties that they have a presence in. And then, I was fortunate enough to be able to join the team full-time in January of 2023 as the executive director of one of their partner counties with Moncom County, running the Moncom Economic Alliance. So, working on the EEO side of things, primarily with advanced manufacturers, healthcare, IT, agribusiness, different things like that. So, excited to step into this role. I feel a great energy from the community, felt that throughout the entire interview process, and just want to give a shout-out to Andrea and everyone else around the city staff. The onboarding process, it's still like drinking water from a fire hose, but I'm having fun doing it, and everyone has been very encouraging, very welcoming. I've got a lot of questions to ask still, so I know that I have a great resource between everyone up here on the board and everyone within the city staff. So, happy to be here, look forward to working with all of you.
Any questions or discussion from the commission? I have only one. Is it Ohio State or University of Michigan?
It's GBSU.
Excuse me, what was your answer?
GBSU.
That's a safe answer.
Thanks, Jacob. Welcome, boards. Now is the time for consent agenda items. There are three. City Commission regular session minutes from October 8th, Planning Commission regular session minutes dated October 16th, and the Library Advisory Board meeting minutes dated November 5th. And I see the librarian here tonight. Nice to see you, Mary. Any changes or discussion on the consent agenda items from the commission? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or with a change, say no. Consent agenda items carry. Moving on to new business public safety, the Fire Department will give the briefing first. And where is Steve tonight? I know he's gone, but is he?
Otto County.
Ah, he's at the Otto County. Good to see you, Jason.
Thank you. So, October was an extremely busy month for the Fire Department. We had 86 calls of service. As far as we know, that's the busiest month on record so far for this department. We also were very heavy in fire prevention. We had 14 classes of first graders over three days within the city. Also helped Georgetown, Zillan Township, and head office again, and Urban Hay Day. So, through all the calls and all the PR events, it was an extremely busy, busy, busy month. So, I just want to thank all the guys in the department for their dedication. So, any questions at all?
Commissioners, any questions for Fire? Acting Fire Chief? Hearing none. Thank you, Jason.
Absolutely.
Sergeant, good to see you. I'll send it down to Dave, please.
Yesterday, I had the honor to be a part of the honor guard for a service in Allendale for veterans. So, I thank a couple of veterans that we have up here as well. We have two, that's the two of you. So, thank you for your service as well. So, it was great to be with a bunch of veterans and students that have heard of you. For the month of October, we had our busiest month in the last twenty years, 72 calls. It's a busier month as well. So, it's summer winding down, things definitely picked up a little bit. So, we've definitely been busy. And during all those calls, we had our yearly training where we qualify with the month that's every year for the state's annuals. So, we did our long guns, our hand guns, and lots of scenario-based trainings with that as well. I had a great time driving around the city on Halloween. So, I got several bags of candy that we ended up handing out in the first hour. So, it was a lot of fun. I would say the beer and 36 there was by far the busiest, so it was a good time. Also, some big stuff that's coming down in the month of December is we have some deputies that are on my body cameras. So, we are starting that process, and in December, all of us, in the middle of December, September, I was at training, and I'll be providing body cams, so we'll be up to speed with that as well. So, it's going to be a big learning curve and lots of trainings. So, that's kind of where we're at. Any questions at all?
Jeff, your retirement date from the Sheriff's Department is when?
My last day of January.
So, you will be here for two more sessions? Okay. And we have the selection process in place for your replacement that has happened, and I've sat down with the undersheriff and sheriff-elect, and I'm sure will be adequately covered with the new.
I have zero doubts.
Zero, some new sergeant. So, I look forward to meeting him as many of us do here.
Yeah, so it'll be good.
Anything else from the commission? Hearing none. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Evening, Dave.
All right, a couple of things I wanted to elaborate on on the report, so I won't go into everything. Let's see, two items there related to the upper warning sirens. And the first class might look like they're entanglers, right? Because we had a successful test, and then later in the month, we're replacing it. What that highlights is the fact that there are some redundant components within the sirens themselves, and also, this is during our regular preventive maintenance, we find things that are going bad before they actually fail. And so, that's why our sirens function normally every time we test them, because we do catch stuff like this. Wesford does a great job of not only finding things, but also getting his deals wherever they can. They got to save used components, save the new component, save the social function money there, and it still works perfectly well. So, I wanted to just kind of clarify that, because at first, when I put those next to each other in the report, I thought, hey, these can perfectly match, but that's how that worked out. Then, the last thing, very bottom, we did have one person who needed resigning from the department. He moved out of the area, he's in California, and I can't have a large portion of my staff living that far away. Or I would have three people that are outside of Hudson area, this would have been just too much. So, after 10 years of service, Orin resigned. And so, we have an opening, and we have an interview scheduled next week for our candidate, somebody who's been working with the county, is a volunteer. I've seen her drive traffic a lot, I know that she can do that and all the other things that we do, so it should be a pretty good interview. Any questions I've had or anything else on the report?
Your team did a magnificent job on Urban Hay Day. For those who was there, it was kind of transparent, but I always have to search them out, and I always note how professional they are in public, and they quietly just take care of all the traffic issues and crowd control. And it's always reassuring to know we have those people in the community that are willing to stand up and keep us safe, so make sure that they understand how much we appreciate their duties.
All right, I'll wish you that.
Anything else from the commission? Hearing none. Good night, Dave. Thank you. Moving on to finance, City Treasurer's monthly report. Treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. This last week, I met with all the department heads and went over their budgets, and as you can see, we're a third of the way through the year, and we're a third of the way through our expenses, so we're tracking pretty good there overall in the general fund. Let's see, what else do we have? We made just over $51,000 last month in interest, so we're still keeping that up, so that's great. Let's see. Mr. Jippen stopped by to make arrangements for his bond installment purchase payment on January 15th, just to make sure we're all set with that, and we are. So, that's moving along. And then, we'll also have the other two payments due February 1st, so those are coming up. And then, we also have the grant spreadsheet for you. And I don't have too much to say this month, keep it short, but I can answer any questions if you have.
Anything from the commission? Andrew, how are we doing on working with the county on the water?
We're waiting for more information, really, from them. We passed along a contract that they sent out to Jessica for review, and we've received that back. And then, we're just waiting on their rates, and pretty much, there was another contract that we're waiting on from them, right, Jessica? So, we're just kind of sitting here, waiting to see what they come up with and what they negotiate with Wyoming. But I think as far as we're concerned, we're in a holding pattern, as far as I know, right?
Yep, I agree. Yeah, the agreements have to be written conjunction, so we need one more piece.
That's just a big piece of the finance, that's why I want to make sure it doesn't get off our radar, because we're all very interested and a little concerned about how this is going to shake out, so.
Yeah.
Sounds like you guys are on top of it.
And with that, I can talk about the meters real quick, unless you have that later on in your thing. But we're a little over a third scheduled now for the entire city, so we're picking out momentum with that, so that's really great. We have, last I checked, it was 805 meters scheduled for install, sorry, November 18th, next week, I believe, so next Monday. And then, yeah, so we still have to get another two-thirds of the city scheduled, but it started off pretty rough, so it's good that it's picked up now. So, we were a little nervous at first, but it's getting better every day, so.
Have all the commissioners scheduled their water meter replacements? Not my idea hasn't worked yet.
If you haven't, you can see me, and I can help you schedule. But they're scheduling into January now, so.
Yeah, I had to remind my wife, and we got it called in.
Okay, good.
But I can also help, too, if you need.
Instead of calling the 1-800 numbers, the finance office has been helping people schedule as they come in and everything, so trying to make it as user-friendly as possible.
Good. Thank you for that update. Any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none. We need payment of bills. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $2,222,165.81, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support. It's been moved and supported. That's a pretty big monthly amount. You want to give us a little bit of the backstory, please?
Yes, sir. A lot of that was, we paid about $900,000 so far for the realignment of Berry Street to the contractor. And then, we've also paid just shy of the $300,000 for the bathroom at Summer Green Park. So, those were the two large, that would be 1.2 million out of that 2.2 million spent. So, that would bring us about to average spending a month, so.
And we've signed off on the Summer Green bathrooms. Is that all complete?
Yeah, I'll have a little bit more in my report. We've reached substantial completion, all things are good. We got a few things that will run in the spring.
But will we open in the spring, then? That's the plan, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to ACH funds distribution. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $519,545.39, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support. So, moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to administrative items. Number nine, commercial rehab exemption certificate application for Terror Square Ventures LLC. This is in regards to the P-8210 incentives. Did you want to give us a... Well, let me answer the motion first. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 24-1802 to set a public hearing for December 10, 2024, to consider the request of Terror Station Ventures LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Give us an update there, city manager. We get...
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, members of the public, if you recall, I believe about a year ago, the city took the steps to create a commercial rehabilitation district. With the establishment of the district, it now allows the developer applicant in this case to move forward with their application to utilize the commercial rehab district. The application in front of you will need to have a public hearing, which we're hoping that you'll set today. Upon that, it'll be sent to the state tax commission.
After the...
After the public hearing.
First, you consider it, and then you'll send it on to the state tax commission.
Thank you. As corrected. And this will be part of their incentive package for Terror Station. Legally, up to 10 years can be granted for this. The timing of this is strategic on the developer to take advantage of the state's fiscal year starting October 1st. This has been discussed at length with the city attorney and with the developer, and once again, as part of the tax incentive package. Essentially, in a nutshell, we're going to freeze property values currently, and then the new investment will have a 10-year period in which the capture will not be realized. So, on year 10, the city will then realize the taxes. So, we're not losing money, we're just getting less of our gain from the time of the development is booked for that 10-year period.
Any discussion for the city attorney or for the city manager? Roughly, what is the savings per year for the developer on this? Do you have a number, then?
Not right now, because that'll change depending on the valuation. I can get you a ballpark number. I don't have that right now, but I can send that to the city.
Maybe you just want to send it to us in email, so we have an understanding of the value of that incentive that we're setting. And then, we lose that tax base for the 10 years, essentially, or a portion of it, anyway.
We'll still get the portion that we would be getting now with the property with no buildings or construction on it, so we'll be receiving some property taxes from that, but we'll wait till year 10 before we see the fruition.
Do they still pay the DDA TIF? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. I can't get the answer to that.
Yeah, that is good. I'll have to look at the definition of the DDA tax increment revenues. I can do that during the meeting and let you know.
Okay, I'd be curious, because that's always a challenge in the DDA as to whether or not we have the funding to support all of our expenditures.
It is. I can tell you, though, that developers expect to get these Act 210 certificates, and it's part of their pro forma, and so.
I know. It's a given now, and it used not to be that way, but it's just they realize that everybody gets them, so. But still, we need to understand the impact.
Yeah, I understand.
Do you have anything to add there about the DDA? All understood. Okay. Well, there's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 10, library card and circulation policy and disclosure form. Is there a motion, Dave?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated library card and circulation policy and the disclosure form.
Second. It's been moved and supported. I know, Dave, you have been working quite closely with the library advisory board. Appreciate the updates we've been getting. I think, Mary, do you want to give us the nickel-dime here, or do you want?
Yeah, if you'd like.
I mean, it's your handiwork, so I know these things never come easy.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to say thank you to Jessica for going on the forth of emails. This is my first process of working with this team and updating some of these, starting to update a lot of these policies. And then, of course, with time, we're just going back and forth, looking at feedback from you. I appreciate that, too. As with every policy, you know, we look through it through a different lens, try to get different perspectives and everything. It's not always going to be 100%. You know, we're going to miss something, but these are a great start. And I brought these to my library board on the 5th of November, and there was very little discussion. You know, some of the high updates I highlighted in the memo there of the kind of the higher changes or updates that we're going to be making. And hopefully, you had a chance to read through all of that and kind of understand that. But I looked at not only just what we had for our library that was already written, but also I looked at other area libraries and what they had written. So, some of the things that were added, such as outreach, you know, a category for outreach, claims returned, I don't, those are things that were not mentioned previously in our policy, but I wanted to make sure that they were clarified, because those are things we actually do in practice. So, I want to make sure that we're trying to get to the best ability that we can. So, are there, knowing that, are there any questions to ask?
How many hours did you spend on this?
Oh, I don't know. Probably too many. But now that I have, I'll stop a little bit more. This started, this one started probably in the fall. It was the next one that we'll talk about that took a little bit longer, and I'll speak to that when that comes. But this one probably started, maybe it's summer reading, I read it up to you. But you were smart, I was smart with summer reading, so, you know, I worked at it in stages, probably since the summertime, I would say.
I'm just curious, did you run this by Georgetown or Jamestown librarians?
I looked at Georgetown's policy of their version of what they have for this, and that was where I had added some of the things, like the things returned and the outreach. You know, I looked at what they were doing, and those are things, like outreach is a big passion of mine, and so I want to make sure that that is clear and that we still have guidelines and rules that kind of explain to patrons what our expectations are as a library moving forward, too. So, yes, I did utilize some of the libraries. I use Howard Miller libraries, well, too.
Dave, anything?
No, it was a good process.
Thank you for supporting the library advisory board. Any other discussions on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Not have to.
I don't have to do a roll call? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Dave, for your commitment. Moving on to the computer and internet policy and waiver form. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated computer and internet policy and approve the new minor internet use waiver.
Second. It's been moved and supported. Are you going to speak to this again, Mary?
This is the one that took a little bit longer of a process. I had started this one in January.
Was it more technical or was it more controversial?
Technical. And there, you know, we were figuring out the workflow with the attorney and Jessica and all that. They were getting bombarded with a lot of stuff from the city, and so we just had to kind of work through that a little bit, too. But this one had originally gone to January, and I started in November of last year, right? So, it went to the January 2024 Library Advisory Board meeting, and I had read through it, but then, at that meeting, I had more questions that arose. So, I, at that point, I said to my board, I was like, I don't feel comfortable moving this forward to this group, because I need to ask some questions of the city attorney in order to make sure that we're legal and doing things the best that we can be for our community. So, that's what kind of held that up for a little bit. And then, we took, you know, there was probably a good three to six months that we weren't able to focus on this, and then probably within the last six months, again, we, along with the other policy, we worked side by side with them.
Dave, you got anything to add to that, or not?
The thing I appreciate the most about this policy is that the city of Hudsonville states clearly that parents are responsible for the content that their children are accessing, which, big believer in parents being responsible for things, and especially, one of the updates I appreciated was adding, since the internet is Wi-Fi now, you don't actually have to log into a device, and when our policies were set up, that wasn't the same way. And so, we ask parents if they are going to be allowing, if I'm saying this the right way, allowing their children to use the Wi-Fi, that they sign a waiver to do that, because we cannot monitor what they do on their own devices at that point. So, I just, I'd appreciate Mary and the staff's commitment to having parents be responsible for content selection.
I have to imagine that's a universal problem across all libraries now.
Correct.
And I'm sure that's a point of dissent and contention, I would assume, across many libraries. But we know it has been locally already, so, but we're well-prepared here with this policy. Any discussions for the librarian, or for Dave? Hearing none. I don't need a roll call, do I? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the policy say no. The motion carries. Well done, Mary, thank you. City manager, you're up.
All right, I'll try to keep this brief, we know how that goes. Good news on the Berry Street alignment front. The project's progressing nicely. We did battle a little bit of weather in the last two weeks that caused some minor delays. The first base core, based course of asphalt was laid today. The top layer will look to be poured on Friday or Monday. The new stoplight, Consumers has been out there. We'll look to install the new stoplight later this week or early next week and wait to go live once the asphalt settled and we open up the road. Bob Miller, Don DeVries, myself, as long as Chief Essenberg, Jeff Stengen, members of Hudsonville Public Schools, had discussed the road striping and the layout as regards to left turn lanes, the length of the left turn lane. We don't have it quite hammered out right now, but we really like the trajectory around, but we've made sure to include the schools in the process. We are slightly behind schedule, but we're talking days, like you said, with the top course layer of asphalt to be poured next week. You have noticed the installation of some very large-scale pine trees. We work with the homeowner as part of the project with the new street to protect from streetlights, some safety mechanisms, a little bit of additional privacy. So things are going good with the Berry Street realignment project. As we mentioned, Buttermilk Creek bathrooms have reached substantial completion. The engineer, public works, and the contractor ran through the punch list on a handful of miscellaneous items. We're in the process of fixing, they may have come out today, some of the landscaping around that area. They came and did not reach our satisfaction level, so they came back to flatten that out and reseed where needed. There will be the installation of Berry shrubs around the bathrooms, organize to the spring to plant those. We have them picked out. We tried to sneak those in this year, it came down to a lack of availability based on the native species that we were looking for. But look forward to the ribbon cutting sometime early next spring. Worked with staff and Don DeVries on the school after parking lot regarding the property purchased from the former McElpine Chiropractic on School Avenue. Design engineering is nearly complete. We're looking at 44 parking spaces, including two EV charging stations. We're hoping to obtain a grant for that, we're in the early stages of that, and of course, it'll include two ADA spaces as well. I authorized the increase of electric capacity and usage to the light posts there, reason being, it is a parking lot, but we should always look at parking lots as other things, potential entertainment space for festivals, for things we have going on. This allows us to put food trucks in there later if we want it, but it gives us options where we don't have to go back and do adjust the electric capacity. We're hoping to put this to bed in the near future with the targeted construction completion date by June 1st. I'm going to be aggressive with the timeline here as much as possible, see when we get it done, most certainly before the end of school, before the large part of wedding season, and the farmer's market. One cool thing about this parking lot is we are designing it with potential location of a bus stop in the future, to mitigate the curb cuts, the concrete destruction. So we're trying to think into the future without really knowing what that would be. We've worked with planners from the Rapid on specs, and, you know, just implemented that into the design. We have an end-up meeting scheduled later this month with regards to the M.TEDF CAT-B grant, with regards to the Corporate Grove Drive and Corporate Exchange roadwork that'll be done. We'll look to do that sometime next year. I don't have a date yet. We'll have this introductory meeting, and then release down to start working on engineering for those two. And again, that was a matching grant from the state of Michigan that's going to allow us to move forward with this road project. Drinking system material inventory as part of the drinking water asset management grant that the city received a few years ago is nearing completion. We're roughly 75% done with the asset management plan, draft will be available to my office by the end of this month. We're looking for an action plan as part of that. We looked at the condition assessments, as well as consequence and likelihood of failure assessments, and an emergency response plan, an updated plan based on our system. Don and Bob have done a great job working in that. Andrew's been involved. We'll also receive a draft rate study, essentially it's an impact study, if this kind of improvement, then this costs. So it ties into what we're talking about with the progress going on with the city of Wyoming and the treatment plant, but equally factoring in our system. So a great tool to have for Andrew and the finance department, myself, to be able to work with as we recommend, future rate impacts down the line to make sure we're planning accordingly, not just for next year and the year after, but a good 5, 10, plus year later. The library roof work continues to be installed through this week. This is a CIP item checked off, and it came in under budget. It's a small crew, we're hoping to be done by the end of this week. Equally, another CIP item, the terra floor, terra square floors, excuse me, are being repolished. It is every bit of a week-long process, as they grind it down and then put the polish coat on, and Ms. Mary, if you remember, yep, we took a tour of Terra Square last year, and the floor, it's been used, it's been danced on, and it shows. So it'll be a good investment for Terra Square. Just a reminder that the holiday parade is November 21st. Setup will take place from 4:30 PM to 6:00 PM. The city will be represented with a banner that I'm told, we have some good volunteers to hold. The safety meeting was held last week, really appreciate Chief Essenberg, Jeff, and Lindsay working with the parade entrance to make sure that we maintain a safe parade. It was well-attended with over 50 individuals. In the interest of public safety, this year there will be a change, candy will be thrown at the end of the parade. With the route and the narrow design of Harvey Street, it gets pretty tight, and we want to make sure that our young folks are well taken care of and that we're doing our best in aiding safety. So we'll try that out this year. I think Lindsay, Brenn, and team have done a great job working with Chief and Sergeant Stengen on this, and we understand it will be a change of pace for some folks, but my priority being our, one of our, if not our topmost priority, I believe it to be a welcome change. And finally, save the date, mark your calendars. Brunch with Santa at Terra Square, a new event this year, will take place on November 30th. There's two sessions, one at 8:30 AM, one at 11:00 AM. We're nearing 150 attendees with a max capacity of roughly 100 per session, total of 200, and spots are filling fast. Terry and team have done a great job planning for the event. There'll be a brunch, there'll be a Santa Claus, there'll be numerous kids' activities, holiday music, and just a great opportunity, local, for families to stay in the city of Hudsonville, utilize Terra Square, and get ready for the holidays. And for esports fans at home, yes, that is the same date as the Ohio State Michigan football game, which is a very important game for all fanbases. So make sure you sign up for that 8:30 session before sponsoring.
Point of clarification, you said, I believe you said, "a" Santa Claus? Is "the" the appropriate?
The point of contention is realized, I misspoke, Ms. Mary. "The" one and only Santa Claus, thank you.
Thank you.
We need somebody with gray hair.
I'm just trying to think mine.
Just want to follow up on a couple of things. I want you to know how appreciative I think we all are and excited to see the Berry Allen street realignment be completed, particularly those that live in that neighborhood, like Dan, and even you and Jack. I mean, we go at that intersection every day, and it's, it will just be a huge relief. When the new light is there, the light is a big upgrade, it allows us to be programmed. It's just, it's going to be a marked change in the traffic flow through 30 seconds, so hats off. This is, from my memory, Dan, 10 years in the make.
All along.
Longer than that, probably, right? Just since I've been here, yeah. So just really appreciate, it's nice to see this come to some final closure. The other thing, too, the parade on the Thursday, we muster at what time? What time do we want the commissioners there?
I'll tell Lindsay about what time, but setups between, I think it's at 4:00 and 6:30, or 4:00 and 6:00 PM would be set up, so 5:30?
Because I recall nearly every snowstorm that we've had to march in, so I would advise all seven of us, I think, right?
Last year we had a snow.
Will be there, and we will all march, and we won't have to carry the banner, because that's been arranged. So this is a good opportunity for us to be seen in public, and I know that, I think we all look forward to this moment. And if you have children, Dave, they're more than welcome to march with us. I want you to make sure they understand. Then following the parade, there is the Christmas tree lighting, which is always also big things. That's before the parade?
That's before the parade?
Yeah. Okay, I'll, we'll be there.
All exciting stuff.
All exciting stuff. Going down the dice, you got anything there, Tobin?
Nothing to add.
Am I next?
You bet.
Perfect. It was a joy to drive back from the airport today and have one light at that intersection, so it felt really good. Props to that. Also wanted to give an update. While I was not there, the team from the Outdoor Discovery Center met with, I believe, Sarah, Bob, Chief Essenberg, as well with some folks from Lucid Architecture and Excel Engineering to talk about what steps would need to be preliminarily figured out for proposed PUD for the Nature Center building and childcare. They went through several different items to talk about, including parking, zoning, water, sanitary, and storm, as well as looking at fire and emergency vehicle access. And so some action items that are coming from that. The city staff are going to be looking at what on-street parking they might want in addition to the parking that will be created there. Sharing information on fire truck requirements for slope and turning radii. We hope to improve the access up into the Nature Center. If you folks can remember, it's quite steep, the drive that exists for a fire truck to access the Nature Center. Look at the project partnership, stormwater strategy, and then on the ODC end, there were some suggestions from city staff around adjusting the plan at the intersection of Presidential Lane and New Holland, providing 20-foot-deep parking spots, and then identify what route for emergency vehicles up the hill. So the hope would be to get some of those answers and then put together a PUD for the informal discussion with the planning commission next.
And you're familiar with that process, having been on the planning commission?
Been few, a couple of them, yes.
I had breakfast with Tyler this morning, I understand there are some challenges there with the easements that we still need to get?
Yeah, so it looks like they found the water easements.
Oh, they, what about sewer?
I don't know about sewer. There were two documents sent at the end of the day today, at least that I'd seen that Sarah was going to be meeting with Bob to talk about. For those of you that aren't familiar with that, there's, the city has a path and its own water main that runs along the north edge of our property, and so just trying to determine where that lines up with the neighboring landowner's property as well, and making sure the documentation's in place.
So that easement's with the prop, the?
It's with the owners of presidential estates.
Presidential estates, okay.
And that was found at about 10:00 AM.
Oh, okay, okay. So I didn't have current information, so we did find it.
Well, information at breakfast was current, and then an hour later, it was no longer current.
Very good, thank you, Dave. Anything else?
No. Grateful for the staff to shift time, and Tyler as well, just to make sure that we're thinking through things, so we can present something that's well thought through to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Let me add one thing, Ms. Brenn, on top of that. I really appreciate the staff at the ODC working with city staff. Equally, we are working on estimates for potential sewer equipment to be installed. There will be need of a small lift station, so we're trying to find a way to judge the capacity at its highest end that would be need to make sure we don't have to do this again. So the city engineer's working on that, and once we get those numbers, we'll get back with Dave and the ODC team, and we'll work together in a collaborative way to figure out how we can realize this project.
Thank you. Jeremy?
I have nothing to add.
Counselor? Larry?
Just a brief update, I've been meeting with the appreciation event committee, and we had, it looks like we're, I'm moving towards two different events, one for our volunteers and one for our staff. The volunteers were looking at, I believe, tentative late January 23 at Terra Square. We'll have basically light food, and we're still looking at a activity to do. We have a couple of suggestions. The first one didn't pan out, because we're going to have too large a group, so we're still working through that.
Good. I know from talking to the commissions with the volunteers, planning and the DDA, Park and Rec, all those volunteers are really looking forward to an event where we can celebrate and express our appreciation, so it's very important. Equally, something for the staff is equally as important, so we are, just so you know, I think as a group, we're supportive of both aspects. Dan, you got anything?
Nothing to add.
You want to talk about the DDA at all, you got anything?
No, a couple other things, though. Last Saturday was a Maid Michigan event at Terra Square. Terry Scott, head of Terra Square, under and alongside with Tyler's guidance, had an absolutely spectacular day. I was a vendor there with my product, it was incredibly well-attended. I think they approached 3,000 people, like 2,700.
No kidding. Holy cow, so you sold a lot of salt and pepper.
So, yeah, I almost, I almost doubled what I did from last year.
Wow.
Brought extra stuff and blew through it, so overall, had food vendors there, all types of crafts there, really well-attended. So kudos to Terry and her team, along with Tyler and all the planning that they did for that, so, yeah, really cool.
That's Terry and her team.
Yep.
It was a great event, and, you know, because of events like that, and thank you for bringing this up, Commissioner, it gives us momentum to do other events, like Brunch with Santa. And that's not the end. How do we utilize that building? And so your participation, the attendees, it all builds momentum to increase the program for the community.
Yeah, and Terry's doing a great job, and that stuff takes a long time. You can't just think up, you know, 10 different new events and implement them. I mean, it's like, you get one, then you get another, then you get another, and it just takes time, so she's doing a great job. And then the other is the number six, because next week, there will be six commissioners. I will be thinking about you all in warm weather.
Right, yes, you'll be thinking about.
Probably with something cold in my hand.
You'll, yeah, I'm sure, sure.
Hopefully something small.
There you go.
You're going, where are you going this time?
Guadalajara.
Okay. And nothing to add? Anything else? Jill?
Do you want me to mention the possible joint meeting?
I think we know that it's coming, we don't have a, we have a date?
I need confirmation from the man next to you on the 16th.
Let me look at that, make sure that staff and all the bodies of the DDA and the planning commissioner are available, too. I believe I have an email sitting in my inbox. I will respond to that first thing in the morning, and we will get that out to the city first.
So that will be in January joint, planning, city, and when?
December.
Planning, city, DDA.
Yes.
And that will be December?
It has to be a calendar year.
This is part of our redevelopment ready.
Okay, yeah, we have to for redevelopment ready, okay.
Ms. Mary?
Yeah? Were you holding a different meeting time, or?
Yes. It will, we'll send it out.
Okay. We have an idea.
December 16th. It's a Monday.
Was there a time that was recommended by staff?
Chris is planning on 7:00.
Save the date, we'll send a confirmation email out tomorrow.
Monday, what?
December 16th.
16th, 7:00 PM.
Yes.
That's tentative, but we'll hear more, right?
Yes.
And this is a requirement for us for our renewal of the?
RRC.
RR, what is it?
RRC.
The email will probably come from Sarah.
Okay.
And I did want to say thank you to the people I did see on Tuesday, so.
And I want to say, well done.
Good job.
You represented the city well, so, thank you.
Not just the city, but the county and the state.
Yep.
And the country.
Our canvas for the city is complete, so no issues.
Very good. Anything else in the commission? Hearing none, I'll ask for a close. Make a motion to adjourn.
There you go.
We are adjourned, thank you.